We're just doing our meeting right now. We're asking for the rest of the meetings.
So, you need to give it, please, a board?
The only other D E P that we have, we finished everything off. We need to follow these, um, again, so, 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 so.
All right, so, we'll open.
Should you stick the little awards tonight on the boardroom? And then we'll close it, okay? Um, please make reference that everybody's budget is fully funded and, um, at this time, um, we're seeing that they're requesting more supplemented budgets.
So, I make a motion that we hold a meeting on Monday, like, twenty-third at seven P. M. All entries closed. And also make a motion that we open the award tonight, August twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, and, twenty-third, and close it noon on Thursday, September fourteenth.
Everybody will be down. Everyone's getting ready. This is not a, really, the most important thing.
Motion is recessed.
Good evening, everybody. So, we opened up our Board of Selectmen's meeting at five forty-five. We took a five-minute recess and we're reconvening at this time. It is now six oh-five. Um, I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and I especially want to welcome our special guests, Representative Carol Fiola, Representative Paul Schmidt. Also from D E P, we have Millie Garcia. We also have Maria Pennard and Anthony Deu. Um, we have town council with us, attorneys George Pucci and Mockridge. My hope for this evening is to get some clarification and some information from D E P with regards to Excel and their sound, um, impact on the residents in the town of Freetown. I want to just caution everybody to please remain calm, listen. Um, if you have any questions, please go to the microphone and, um, state your name and address for the record. At this time, um, I want to turn it over to D E P, um, for any comments, um, that you can make regarding the sound, um, and the air quality tests that have been done in recent months.
Good evening. Good evening. Yep. All set? Perfect. Um, good evening. My name is Millie Garcia Serrano, and I serve as the Regional Director in the Southeast Region. Um, it is a pleasure to be here tonight, um, at the request of the residents, at the request of Representative Fiola, at the request of the Select Board, um, in other parties. We are very happy to be here tonight, and we appreciate the opportunity to hopefully provide you with some answers that have been requested for the department to, um, weigh in and comment on. Um, tonight we'll be focusing very specifically... Tonight we'll be speaking very specifically to an action that's, that, um, is related to an air quality permit that was issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. Um, we, uh, we were asked to provide very pointed questions, answers to questions. Um, however, I would like to at least provide a few introductory statements and background statements for the benefit of the, of the attendees tonight, so that we can all be on the same level playing field with regards to our jurisdiction and authority. And then, very quickly, um, I will be turning, um, the microphone over to my colleague, Maria Pennaud, who is the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Air and Waste. Um, that is the specific bureau that is responsible for ensuring that any kind of action that is germane to a permit, for example, in this case, um, air quality permit, um, her, within her jurisdiction and authority, um, she is tasked with, um, the opportunity and basically the responsibility to ensure that there is compliance, um, to any party that issues, um, that receives a permit, uh, once they apply for a permit from the department. So, I can tell you that, um, the matter that we'll be discussing today speaks to a company titled Excel Recycling LLC. It's a company with a place of business at Seventeen Ridge Hill Road in Freetown, um, with a mailing address of, uh, Charlotte White Road in Westport. Mass D E P is responsible for the implementation and enforcement of Mass General Law, one-one-one, fourteen, two A, and other, other, um, orders and policies and regulations. But, to basically cut to the chase, this particular, um, authority speaks to air pollution control regulations. In this case, noise is, um, a regulated, um, constitution of concern under the air regulations, and therefore, whereas there's been allegations and complaints associated with the operation of the facility, um, and the impact, um, the compliance status, um, that's been laid out in the permit, we're finding ourselves here today to discuss, um, a lot of complaints that Mass D E P has received. And for the most, most of the complaints, Mass D E P has either responded or taken action or incorporated them into the document. So, um, we, um, on behalf of the Commissioner, I ta, our task was ensuring that we follow through with any non-compliance. And, um, we received an application of a permit on November twenty-nine, and then finally we issued a, um, permit, a final air quality plan approval permit, um, to Excel as per the permit application that was in front of us. And the permit basically spec, the permit was very specific to the construction and the operation of a shredder with separation equipment and many ancillary equipment to support the Excel, um, operations. This permit was issued, um, following, um, the parties, Excel's, um, requests and approval and issuance of a local license. So, there are multiple jurisdictions here that govern, um, how this company has to, uh, comply both local, state, and if necessary or applicable, federal law. Um, we received a number of complaints stemming from once the operation started, um, in full throttle in December. Um, and since then, we have been pretty much, um, trying to better understand the very difficult science of acoustics, um, attempting to understand, um, how to go about measuring and documenting and factually asserting that there has been a violation. I'm going to turn it over to Maria because I think, um, in her role as the Deputy Regional Director and, um, working day-in, day-out, and her shop being the one that issued the permit, um, she will be able to walk you through all the elements of the permit, where we are. And, um, I do have some news for everyone here in the, in the room, so we can talk about, um, further and recent developments that have occurred, um, probably within the last month, where we have been steadfast in trying to ensure that, um, we address the non-compliance issue.
Thank you, Millie. Can everybody hear me? Yes. Uh, so, as Millie indicated, uh, my section had issued an air quality plan approval, and the prom, plan approval is very specific about, eh, issuing permits, eh, to control any potential emissions of, uh, pollutants to the air. And, as you know, eh, noise is, uh, also a regulated, eh, eh, pollutant. Eh, the, the permit specified that the company had to comply with the Mass D E P's noise eh, policy, and the noise policy eh, sets a limit of no more than ten decibels over background, over eh, the ambient noise as the, eh, what the company can eh, generate. And eh, as part of the permit, eh, the Excel was required to eh, conduct a sound monitoring eh, once the, eh, company, the facility was in operations. The, that sound monitoring was conducted eh, on May, eh, fourth eh, of this year, and Mass D E P eh, we took our own samples eh, at the same time as Excel's. And the results of the eh, sound monitoring do indicate that the facility is operating over the ten decibels eh, that is allowed by the permit. Therefore, eh, Mass D E P eh, has determined that they are in non-compliance with the permit, and they must eh, implement additional indication to eh, operate in compliance. That is what's being required. Eh, Mass D E P has, uh, also received numerous complaints, eh, and I'm eh, usually the person that, uh, eh, answers the phone when, eh, residents call, so I feel like I know you all, eh, and you're lovely people, so eh, I don't mind talking to everybody that calls. Eh, we have eh, visited the facility several times. We have eh, addressed many eh, eh, issues that you have brought to our attention. And as a result, eh, eh, on February twenty-seventh of this year, we did issue a notice of, of non-compliance to the facility, and the facility did respond by eh, making eh, improvements eh, to the facility, adding eh, sound-absorbing materials to the enclosure inside the shredder, eh, which I believe it helps some, but eh, not enough for them to pass eh, the test, eh, the compliance testing. Eh, Excel has eh, since eh, been in constant communication with us eh, regarding what is that they would like to do in response, and, uh, Millie will eh, mention where we are on those discussions. But eh, eh, the permit also required that eh, they eh, conduct eh, an emissions test eh, for particular eh, emissions and volatile organic compounds. And they did the testing, and eh, eh, Mass D E P also participated during the, the testing. And they eh, demonstrated that eh, they are in compliance with the emissions portion of the testing, eh, eh, particularly, particular mother and the O C's. And there were no eh, fugitive emissions detected. Therefore, eh, what is going to happen eh, moving forward? Millie, do you want to add to?
So, um, over the past couple of weeks, we have been, um, reaching out to the company, and the company, at the same time, has been reaching out to us, um, in consideration of the need to arrive at what we're hoping is, um, the better approach, um, rather than a draconian unilateral approach, which the Commonwealth and the department reserves the right to invoke if needed. Um, as with any enforcement matter, um, it is always our preference to arrive at a compliance, um, use the compliance approach, the consent approach. Um, we do have an instrument by which we can compel parties to come and participate, um, is what we deem as a higher-level enforcement action. A, um, notice of non-compliance has been issued in the past, that's deemed as lower-level enforcement, and that becomes a springboard for potential future actions if needed. Um, albeit, we did not use a, um, we, we stated, um, to the company that there were issues in a letter that we abundantly made clear there were some violations. Um, we have been basically attempting to resolve the bigger picture, which is future compliance. So, let it be known, um, I'm here to say today that, um, past non-compliance has been acknowledged by the company, that the company, um, understands that the department is seeking a penalty associated with the violations that were incurred during the month of May, and that is based on very factual information, the sampling results that we did alongside with the company. Um, the results were pretty much identical. Um, we also, at the request of the residents and at the request of other parties, and ourselves included, um, we decided to do our own subsequent, um, sampling, what we deemed as an unannounced inspection, just to kind of see and understand. And we were able to verify that indeed, there are some, there is room for improvement at this particular facility, as it pertains to the noise source areas that we have identified. One of the challenges that often happens with these kinds of facilities, you have noises that are emitted through, um, stationary and non-stationary sources. Um, things like, for example, stationary would be the shredder that is currently operating. Um, non-stationary sources would be things that move, for example, trucks that are coming in and out. So, all of these pieces cumulatively, um, account for what is basically measured. Our point of compliance, um, as per how the policy works, is at the fence line. But more importantly, um, also, we try to, uh, ensure that if it's heard at the fence line, um, then the question becomes, is it also heard at the receptor points, which are the residents? The residents, um, and we have done some sampling there. Um, parties have provided us with access, so we have been able to go there and validate and verify. So, I, I'm just happy to tell you today that with regards to acknowledging that there have been some violations, um, the company is not disputing that, and in fact, they will be paying a penalty to address the, incur the past non-compliance. Um, so, I just, um, I'm, just want to at least close the loop on that, because that's been a question that I think has been asked, um, of the D E P, as to how is the department going to be, um, addressing that particular issue. Um, also, just to close the loop on that, I know that per State Records' request, um, the residents and other, um, individuals, um, including, um, Representatives Fiola and others, they've asked for the reports. We have provided information that is believed, that is basically, um, available through the, uh, it's in our domain, however, it's, uh, subject to, to release. So, we have provided that information, and, um, I invite anyone that has any questions, more than happy to sit down, um, with you alongside with Maria and our technical team to, um, better understand, um, the science of acoustics, which is quite complicated. Um, not my area of expertise, but enough to say that, um, our findings, um, were finally acknowledged, um, that we will be closing the loop on that. So, where do we stand? Um, because we believe that still there is ample room for, um, ample room for improvement, um, the department has been very vigorously meeting with, um, the company over the last couple of weeks, um, and more so this past week. And, um, I'm happy to report that we are, in principle, we have an agreement, we have reached an agreement in principle that will be providing for very aggressive mitigation. Um, I would like to at least, um, highlight some of those pieces. Um, we are on a very aggressive timeline, um, as it works with any kind of, eh, action that, um, the department enters, basically invokes, and the party enters into, again, emphasis on the word consent, um, once the department executes that document, and what that means is that we draft the document, the party and their attorneys read it, um, they sign the dotted line, it comes back to our office, Mass D E P signs on the dotted line. Once it's executed, um, the Chief Municipal Officer and the Boards of Health, they receive a copy, and then it's subject to State Records' request, and, um, in this, in this case, um, there is high interest in trying to see and understand what exactly are the terms and conditions of the documents, and we will be releasing them. Um, I can honestly tell you that, um, often it's been presented to me, um, by a lot of residents, and our office basically handles, um, a lot of things from water waste, water air, odor, um, hazardous waste, brownfields. I can tell you that we have over, uh, one hundred programs, wetlands, coastal erosion. Um, we have over hundreds of regulations and policies that, that we, um, are tasked with, with ensuring that there is, uh, compliance. I mean, I can tell you that, um, eighty-four cities and towns in, in the islands, um, often, um, our stra, our approach to, as an enforcement agency, and I think it's something that, um, our Commissioner would, would share with you tonight, and I do on behalf of the Commissioner as well, and our Deputy Commissioner, we always try, um, to enter into an agreement by way of, through an administrative consent. In this case, we are adding a P. because it's an administrative consent order with a penalty. And, um, that's not the only methodology to get to yet. And I think, I've said with some of you, um, some of the residents from particularly High Street, and, um, kind of described a little bit what, um, the strategies often are, so we have a compliance approach, and if that doesn't work, the Mass D E P always reserves the right to issue a unilateral order. And in this case, because there's a penalty that's involved, we would also be seeking a penalty assessment notice, so we would issue U A O. with a P. and, um, we have articulated and discussed, um, the various options with the party. But I'm happy to report, again, that, um, often, um, it's been our experience, our professional experience, that, um, the department can get a more satisfactory, um, resolution to a matter, um, with a consent document that also includes, and, and very vigorous milestones and language that speaks to stipulated penalties in the event that the party does not comply with the milestones that are set forth. Um, again, um, the spirit in the agreement in principle with regards to going down this pathway was reached, um, this week. Um, I would like to tell you that, um, there is a willingness from the department and Excel, again, to underscore that, to enter into an administrative consent, consent order with penalty, which intends to address the non-compliance, as well as develop a plan and a methodology to ensure that there is no future non-compliance. Um, we are pursuing very aggressive installation of further sound mitigation measures, as well as the implementation of best management practices, which we title B M Ps. Um, Excel will pay a penalty, um, they have agreed to that. In addition to that, um, we are looking for the future non-compliance, um, future compliance by way of these elements. Implementation of B M Ps. Um, we are, um, in the moment right now, working with the acoustics engineer and our technical team to really go beyond what's been done today. I know that there are some things that have been implemented since, uh, our last meeting, um, in the month of June, um, which will be solidified and, um, identified in the document that party's interested in receiving that document, more than happy to share that document once it's signed, um, to basically tell you what it is that has been, um, according, been represented to the department as, um, additional mitigation that has been, um, incorporated to date. However, we, again, do believe that there's a lot of work to be done, and because of that, we are pressing for more aggressive mitigation. Um, deadlines, we will be requiring deadlines for a number of things, including, for example, sound mo, modeling. Um, we are going to be pursuing, um, the purchase of, or of materials and the installation of aggressive sound mitigation measures. I want to tell you that the department has researched this particular, um, feature of our A C O. P. And, um, some of that sound mitigation often is not readily available in the United States. So, there might be some need for time to secure the necessary, um, appurtenances that will be needed to mitigate that noise. But, um, we are, again, pushing very hard, and the, the party has entered and is willing to pursue, um, that mitigation that hopefully, and we underscore that, we need to make sure that this works, um, in a very expedited fashion. Um, dates for compliance testing, so once that, um, the, the new mitigation or the additional mitigation, once it's installed, the department is going to be pursuing a very aggressive, um, timeframe for testing. Um, testing locations have already been identified, and it's agreed by our tech, our technical team, as well as Excel's technical team, that those are some appropriate locations. Um, this is a very difficult, um, location, um, given the way that the sound, um, behaves in the environment. You have the facility that is almost at the baseline, some homes are up in a hill, um, sound the way it travels, that definitely creates, um, a lot of complications, and we recognize that, and I think that has been definitely part of the challenge, particularly in this, um, with this facility. Um, I have been in constant communication with other regional directors and other technical team across the Commonwealth, and I will tell you that this particular site is very unique, in that it has that geographic feature that makes it very complicated to fully address, um, the sound, uh, the noise that's emitted. However, um, we believe very strongly that with some very aggressive and well-put-out engineered sound mitigation at the source, we can definitely prevent, um, the possibility and, um, you know, the scenario that we are, um, basically struggling with today. Um, so, we, once that, um, it's been represented to us, and, um, part of our agreement in principle is that the party will be, uh, developing, basically, developing a plan for testing, we will be approving that plan, uh, testing in the same locations to ensure that we have good data trends, and, um, following that testing, um, we will be provided with the data, and Mass D E P is committed to also collect sampling at the same time to ensure that, um, there is, um, you know, um, harmonization of the data, so that we have a good data set that is representative and D E P, um, basically approves. Um, dates for submission of the testing results, we will be pursuing aggressive results to understand if the new mitigation is working. In addition, um, one of the things that is very key for the department and truly is the, to us, is, um, what so, would solidify, um, or, you know, basically, the one term and condition that for us is extremely important, is that, um, Excel will agree to cease any operations if the test protocol, um, shows that there is, um, sound that's being created in one portion, for example, of that particular area. Um, the idea is that they would stop and fix it. So, um, you know, just to, to underscore the need to, for quick action, and I just want to, on that basis, um, Excel does believe that they can, um, they definitely are in agreement to work with the department, to reach, um, the milestones that we have set forth, at the terms and conditions that we believe are very important for us to move forward with a consent order. Um, again, um, often happens, if something falls apart, the department always reserves the right, and we can basically unilaterally, unilaterally order what we need to order. Um, but, I, as I have explained to, to many people, um, not just this venue, but, um, through our travels and in other engagement and other matters across the Southeast Region, um, cities and towns, um, once you issue an order, pretty much, um, party has appeal rights, um, the party could basically invoke an appeal, um, we would all be in the same situation until the matter is heard in front of the judge. It could take a year, two years, there's no guarantee, and in fact, there's no guarantee of how the, a judge may rule. So, for those, um, reasons, um, I'm here to tell you that-
Any kind of action that the department enters, basically invokes, and the party enters into, again, emphasis on the word consent. Once the department executes that document, and what that means is that we draft the document, the party and their attorneys read it, they sign the dotted line, it comes back to our office, Mass DEP signs on the dotted line. Once it's executed, the chief municipal officer and the boards of health, they receive a copy, and then it's subject to state records requests, and in this case, there is high interest in trying to see and understand what exactly are the terms and conditions of the documents, and we will be releasing them. I can honestly tell you that often it's been presented to me by a lot of residents, and our office basically handles a lot of things from water waste, water air, odor, hazardous waste, brownfields. I can tell you that we have over 100 programs, wetlands, coastal erosion. We have over hundreds of regulations and policies that we are tasked with ensuring that there is compliance. I can tell you that 84 cities and towns in the islands, often, our approach to, as an enforcement agency, and I think it's something that our commissioner would share with you tonight, and I do on behalf of the commissioner as well, and our deputy commissioner, we always try to enter into an agreement by way of, through an administrative consent. In this case, we are adding a P because it's an administrative consent order with a penalty. And that's not the only methodology to get to yet. And I think, I've said with some of you, some of the residents from particularly High Street, and kind of described a little bit what the strategies often are. So we have a compliance approach, and if that doesn't work, the Mass DEP always reserves the right to issue a unilateral order. And in this case, because there's a penalty that's involved, we would also be seeking a penalty assessment notice, so we would issue UAO with a PAM. We have articulated and discussed the various options with the party. But I'm happy to report again that often, it's been our experience, our professional experience, that the department can get a more satisfactory resolution to a matter with a consent document that also includes in very vigorous milestones and language that speaks to stipulated penalties in the event that the party does not comply with the milestones that are set forth. Again, the spirit in the agreement and principle with regards to going down this pathway was reached this week. I would like to tell you that there is a willingness from the department at Excel, again, to underscore that, to enter into an administrative consent order with penalty, which intends to address the noncompliance, as well as develop a plan and a methodology to ensure that there is no future noncompliance. We are pursuing very aggressive installation of further sound mitigation measures, as well as the implementation of best management practices, which we title BMPs. Excel will pay a penalty, they have agreed to that. In addition to that, we are looking for the future compliance, future compliance by way of these elements. Implementation of BMPs. We are, in the moment right now, working with the acoustics engineer and our technical team to really go beyond what's been done today. I know that there are some things that have been implemented since our last meeting in the month of June, which will be solidified and identified in the document that party's interested in receiving that document, more than happy to share that document once it's signed, to basically tell you what it is that has been, according, been represented to the department as additional mitigation that has been incorporated to date. However, we again do believe that there's a lot of work to be done, and because of that, we are pressing for more aggressive mitigation. Deadlines, we will be requiring deadlines for a number of things, including, for example, sound modeling. We are going to be pursuing the purchase of materials and the installation of aggressive sound mitigation measures. I want to tell you that the department has researched this particular feature of our ACOP. And some of that sound mitigation often is not readily available in the United States. So there might be some need for time to secure the necessary appetances that will be needed to mitigate that noise. But we are again pushing very hard, and the party has entered and is willing to pursue that mitigation that hopefully, and we underscore that, we need to make sure that this works in a very expedited fashion. Dates for compliance testing. So once that, the new mitigation or the additional mitigation, once it's installed, the department is going to be pursuing a very aggressive timeframe for testing. Testing locations have already been identified, and it's agreed by our technical team, as well as Excel's technical team, that those are some appropriate locations. This is a very difficult location, given the way that the sound behaves in the environment. You have the facility that is almost at the baseline, some homes are up on a hill. Sound, the way it travels, that definitely creates a lot of complications. And we recognize that, and I think that has been definitely part of the challenge, particularly in this, with this facility. I have been in constant communication with other regional directors and other technical team across the Commonwealth, and I will tell you that this particular site is very unique in that it has that geographic feature that makes it very complicated to fully address the sound, the noise that's emitted. However, we believe very strongly that with some very aggressive and well-put-out engineered sound mitigation at the source, we can definitely prevent the possibility and, you know, the scenario that we are basically struggling with today. So we, once that, it's been represented to us, and part of our agreement and principle is that the party will be developing, basically, developing a plan for testing. We will be approving that plan, testing in the same locations to ensure that we have good data trends, and following that testing, we will be provided with the data, and Mass DEP is committed to also collect sampling at the same time to ensure that there is harmonization of the data, so that we have a good data set that is representative and DEP basically approves. Dates for submission of testing results, we will be pursuing aggressive results to understand if the new mitigation is working. In addition, one of the things that is very key for the department and truly is to us is what would solidify, or, you know, basically, the one term and condition that for us is extremely important is that Excel will agree to cease any operations if the test protocol shows that there is sound that's being created in one portion, for example, of that particular area. The idea is that they would stop and fix it. So, you know, just to underscore the need to, for quick action. And I just want to, on that basis, Excel does believe that they can, they definitely are in agreement to work with the department to reach the milestones that we had set forth, at the terms and conditions that we believe are very important for us to move forward with a consent order. Again, often happens, if something falls apart, the department always reserves the right, and we can basically unilaterally order what we need to order. But I, as I have explained to many people, not just this venue, but through our travels and other engagement and other matters across the southeast region, cities and towns, once you issue an order, pretty much, party has appeal rights. The party could basically invoke an appeal. We would all be in the same situation until the matter is heard in front of the judge. It could take a year, two years, there's no guarantee, and in fact, there's no guarantee of how a judge may rule. So for those reasons, I'm here to tell you that in my, as regional director, I believe strongly that attempting to resolve the matters by invoking an administrative consent order with penalty, to me, seems like the most appropriate approach in this case, rather than perhaps just issuing something that could sit in a court of law for a very long time unresolved. So I hope, I hope that, you know, we continue to come here, that we definitely are committed to sharing, once the document is entered into, sharing that document, continuing to work with the community, continuing to receive the complaints, continuing to invoke and engage the town. I think the town has been very helpful to the DEP as it pertains to going to complaints and reporting for us, they can get there faster. We do process the complaints, we have validated complaints, and thus why we are here tonight, to basically acknowledge that there is a lot of room for improvement. But again, I'm happy to report that the company is willing to, not only, basically, they understand that there is a situation, that they need to cure the past noncompliance by way of penalty, but beyond the penalty, really make, make the situation better. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I invite you to ask any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to anybody on the floor. For questions or comments. Steve, once you give those to her, can you just go to the mic and just state your name and address for the record, and then just explain to the audience what you've done?
I don't understand, first of all, is how the Ospreys can be subject to all the smoke and everything.
Steve, I know who you are.
You don't hear it?
No, I want you to state your name and your address for the record, please.
Steve Tripp, Boilings, Indian Drive, Mossel.
Thank you.
And like I said, the Ospreys are living right there. They don't even fly during the week anymore. I don't understand where those birds go, but they go somewhere else. They used to fly over the thing, the cell tower, they used to fly around our yacht. They don't fly there anymore. You can see them on Sunday when they're there. Evidently, the noise scares them away. So how do you do that? It's a federally thing, it's a nesting bird site. No work's supposed to be done around the area, but you build a whole scrapyard right around the cell tower. You know what I'm saying, I mean, how do they do that?
Well, thank you, this new issue that you're bringing to me, to my attention. And again, we are in the process of negotiation right now. If there is, you know, we have our colleagues at Fisher Wildlife. I know that often, this kind of facility needs to go through the MEPA process, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act. Any kind of issues that deal with threatened endangered species are dealt with with a separate office. But I can tell you that our permit, the review of the permit takes into account, once we get the green light from the executive office of energy and the environment, they have their MEPA office. So in my estimation, this issue has never been raised. I can definitely, again, look through the MEPA, but I think that that was probably a negative finding, so I need to basically reconcile this information with any kind of permits, how it pertains to the noise.
I called OSHA because is water pits on the side there for the runoff water? I guess, that's what you want to call it, is in those pits? Okay, from what I understand, there's no bottoms in those pits. Can you tell me if they are or not? Do all that water runs, and all this fluff, all the fluff runs into those pits?
You're talking about the stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah, Excel has built...
It's like a concrete wall?
Yes, and the water actually evaporates, and very, very little gets, goes into the groundwater. There are no surface water discharges.
So does he use that water to cool the machines too? Is that what he's doing? That when it's in those vaults, those concrete vaults that he has? Do they use that, or is that just runoff water?
That is, my understanding is, is the stormwater that evaporates, it's so, the structure is so overdesigned that the water that goes into that channel evaporates before it gets anywhere.
Okay. You're gonna penalize him, right? So what are you gonna find him? Is that what you're doing to Excel?
Yes, yes, that is.
So where does that money go?
It goes to the general fund for the state.
About the people on Excel and to drive and have to put up that toll rate, this thing? Do we get nothing? We don't get reimbursed?
The way that our, the enforcement regs and the penalty regs are structured, DEP doesn't even get the money, Mr. Tripp, just so you know. Nobody gets the money except the general fund. That's how it goes.
Because Mr. Costa's already made the assumption that he doesn't care if you want to penalize him, he'll just pay the penalty. He makes more than Joe makes here in one day than he makes in a whole year.
I cannot speak to that, but I can tell you that the penalty that the department is pursuing will be delivered through a lockbox to the general fund.
Next.
Good evening, Michael Braw, 42 High Street. Referring to the penalty, I don't know if there are any soccer fans here, and little incident that just happened with Ronaldo, player, soccer player, the most famous soccer player in the world. A dollar figure to that man is nothing. Okay? And I believe Mr. Marty is in the same boat. A dollar to that man does his harm. We need to shut the facility down, so it really hurts his pocket. A multiple thousand dollar fine to that man is nothing.
If I can speak to that. The department has an obligation to assess penalties when there's a violation of a regulation. We don't do this with regards to any kind of punitive, you know, ulterior motives. I do not personally, on a personal level, know Mr. Martin Costa. I only know him by way of the department coming to this potential responsible party and compel him, compelling him to the table. But we have an open bookkeeping practice here that basically triggers a violation, and we need to close the, we need to have good housekeeping when it comes to penalties. So whether it's a small penalty or a large penalty, otherwise, we would need to do some writing, underwriting, to say that the party is not able to pay the penalty, which any party can come to the table and say, "I have inability to pay," and then there's a formula, three years of tax records, and that was not the case. Basically, the department, in a very streamlined fashion, showed the calculation. We told the party what the penalty is, and I cannot speak to whether it hurts his pocket or not, but I can tell you that at least, that is something that we must do in order to close the book on this past noncompliance.
Now, can the penalties consist of restricting his hours?
Penalty strictly based on the fact that there was a violation of the 10, the DDA, so violation of noise concentrations that were captured on the three separate days that the party was out there.
One more, I got one more question, I just want to pull up my notes. About the air quality and the testing that DEP performed, can you let us know exactly what you guys are going off, on what days, what testing took place?
I'm talking about the plant testing that Excel's consultant performed, and Mass DEP observed. We had approved the protocol, and we made sure that they followed the approved protocol. Also, we do our own observations of like opacity and any dissipations. So we were present for the testing, and then Excel submitted the results, and it's in the form of our report.
Okay, the resident's understanding of that particular day that you're speaking about was a false test. That's what we're calling it. That was a day that Mr. Marty did not run how he's running now. Steve's picture, I believe there's an example there, if you can refer to that page, of the, basically the color of the smoke coming out of the stack. That particular day that you're referring to, there was a human, human being standing on top of the shredder with a meter. There is no way, I'm a firefighter, I work under extreme conditions with an SCBA, which is a self-contained breathing apparatus. There is no way that that man would have performed the test that he did under those conditions without being protected. Okay? So basically, what we want to let you know is that, that particular day was a false reading, totally false. We definitely need to get on a more routine scheduling of testing. Going off of one day, that that man is notified that he will be, that testing will be taking place at his facility, let's think clearly about this.
We have, in response to complaints, we have conducted several inspections, and we have made our own observations.
Air quality?
Air quality, yes.
Or sound?
Both.
How many tests have been performed there? With the meters on top of the shredder, over the stack?
No, that, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about, I want to adjust the picture. And what we have found out is, based on our observations, the company uses water, amended water, to cool down the shredder. And a lot of times, what you're observing is steam.
Steam, correct. Let's look at the color.
Yes, and when you look at it from a certain angle, it, against the sun, it casts a shadow. And to be able to read the testing, you really need to follow a very precise protocol, and people need to be certified. I have my inspectors go to smoke school, and they are trained on those observations. And I don't know if you've met Mr. John Pano, but he has come to the facility on several occasions to make observations. And that's what he has indicated to me that he's upset.
The picture's right in front. Steve, where's the yellow, the yellow smoke that you're producing there? There's color to the smoke, color. Steam is white.
That's correct, and I think that Maria is basically trying to explain is that this particular, the water is injected into the shredder to cool down that piece of equipment. And in the process, all that water basically turns into steam, which basically condensates, and it's what you see. So I think, for example, we get the same reaction when we had the towers in Somerset with the power plant, you know, we had those same complaints, and we had the same technical staff going out there and trying to ensure that it's nothing that is being emitted into the environment. So our observations is that it's steam, that it's being emitted as part of just the result of adding the water to cool down the shredder. The, as far, what I understood on the day that the air quality sampling took place is that, that's a very dangerous maneuvering that needs to happen, and, you know, you was a firefighter, I think you would have that sense of appreciation that, basically, potentially physically climbing into a stack to get at an exposure point in a concentration. We advocate for safety first. So with that, hence why the department approved a protocol that balanced public safety, safety of the worker, safety of the actual analyst that's getting up on the actual, on the actual point of measuring. May not be perfect, but I think it's something that balances the objectives, and they did perform that testing in a way that was approved. The testing methodology is very sensitive. It looks at particulate matter 2.5 microns, also particulate matter of 10 microns. This is something that the department, the testing methodology and the interpretation of the data, we borrow from the federal government, the US Environmental Protection Agency. And so there is a very, very robust approach to methodology. We are not responsible for generating the results, a contract laboratory is responsible. We will continue to, again, listen to the concerns as we discuss. We are still in the middle of negotiations, and anything that stems from concerns and things that warrant some more discussion, this is the right opportunity.
I'm speaking for myself, and I'm sure all my colleagues feel the same way, that we're very uncomfortable when DEP states that they are in compliance of air quality testing. When you state it like that, that makes us very uncomfortable.
Well, I stated the fact that the report documented compliance.
The report of the testing of that one particular day that you're referring to?
If that was the compliance testing that is representative of operations, we approved the protocol, and we observed the implementation. So we believe that the data was accurate. And I just can tell you what the report said.
And, you know, nothing, personally, you guys have been great to, you know, you guys have assisted us tremendously, and we appreciate what you do for us. But of course, now we want to solve this problem.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Microphone to her. Hi. Hello, this is Ellen Lima. I live at 41 High Street in Assam. My claim to fame is lithium ion light. And I am absolutely appalled at how the operation of this particular plant in this particular area. I have a number of questions. The first one is, in the residence on High Street, we are on groundwater wells. The people on Alexandria, I believe you have city water. However, going back many generations and many years ago here in town, the BFI dump, that's now, I'm not sure what it's called, in Fall River, was going to be located there, behind the banks, behind the post office, in Alexandria. That was going to be the dump. We bought it, we bought it, we bought it. But one of the things we found, was there was an enormous aquifer, one of the biggest ones in this part of the state, located there. Has anybody checked the water in that aquifer in the wells to see these pits where this Excel water is draining into and not necessarily evaporating are not lined? The person who worked on the pits let us know that. So we have no way of knowing where this is going. And I have an honor, I had to take inorganic, organic chemistry, all these crazy things, and I know that these pollutants can travel some distance. Unfortunately, we've had problems in this town before with groundwater being polluted. So I am very much in question with that. I would like DEP to follow through on that more. Second thing is, how come they're allowed to keep running if they're not in compliance right now? The noise level, depending on the day or what they're crushing, hits my house, and I live a good quarter mile away, I'm on the hill. It hits my house, like, you know, we had a conversation with somebody that lives there on the lower end of High Street. You know, didn't want to be out in the yard because of the smells, because of the sounds. I mean, it is, it is not just the noise that's bothering us. If this is steam, why does it have such a foul odor to it? You know, I mean, there's much more to this than just what you see, or even what you see in Steve's pictures. what you see in Steve's pictures. And how come they're, they're allowed to run if the noise level, if they're exceeding the noise levels? You know, if they're, if they're not in compliance? Yes, go.
Sure. Would you like to continue answering the question?
Okay, alright, okay. Sure. Also, they're operating outside of the timeframes that have been approved by the select. Yesterday they had started way before 7:30. And so, poor, now he had to hear from me. And I don't call every day, I don't. I mean, I'm at the point where enough is enough, but this was so loud, so early, that, you know, they're not supposed to, they have hours of operations, limits have been set, right, by your desk? So would it benefit me to call the police department and put in an petition complaint to them? Yeah, okay.
You can't. Police department says they're not taking the results anymore, they just got to go to the board of health.
But I'd like it for somehow to be recorded, you know? Because this is like, being there, I'm slapping you in the face, that's what I feel like.
It should be the police department.
Okay. Alright, um. Now, what I've been told, but I don't have, and I, it's said in public records, is that when Excel first came in, and I'm not sure when in the process this happened, that they went to certain individuals that lived in close proximity and established some kind of, of, um, I wouldn't necessarily call it agreement with them, and they said it's, it's available to us, um, for those of us who didn't sign this agreement, or didn't sign this, I don't know, memorandum of understanding, I don't know what you would even call it. Do you know, are you aware of anything like that?
It's not part of our jurisdiction, any private settlement or matters, we do not intervene there.
Would it be illegal, Ted, answer this question for me?
May I, there, there was a civil lawsuit that involved certain residents in the area. The town is not part of that, so we, we don't, we don't have the documentation of that. I am aware that there was a settlement of that civil litigation, so, uh, but we, we, the town itself nor DEP was a part of that civil litigation.
Okay. Um, is that part of public records? Is it something we could get a copy of or, or anything like that?
I, I don't know if that was filed as part of the lawsuit. Sometimes lawsuits are settled and their, uh, settlement documents are separate and apart. The residents are not a, a public body, so unlike town records, they're not subject to the public records law.
Sorry. This is kind of a little aside, but I meant to bring it tonight and I forgot. When they were not in compliance initially and we were covered with shredding materials up on High Street specifically, I know it also goes along the railroad tracks, sometimes we hike through there, um, and I believe it was also on your properties. I, the birds made lovely nests out of them and I'd have them to show you if you want those. Yeah, okay, alright. I meant to bring it tonight, sorry. Um, could we do, you know, you were talking just, you know, with you about the, um, the safety of the people trying to do this emissions testing, could we possibly do something with drones?
I, I'm not aware that we, at this moment, the department has developed a protocol for implementing alternative approaches on drones.
Yeah.
I know that, for example, the police department, the state police department and the FAA, other entities do use drones, we, we do not.
Okay.
Um, we use often, um, if, if it pertains to identifying, for example, weapons change, um, we use.
Right.
Mass G I S data, if we have the ability to compare and contrast weapons change of past years and then just basically calculate any kind of, uh, loss or, or any kind of injury. But basically, that's just comparing snapshots in time based on available information to us, like mass G I S.
Alright, and my last, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention that we do have a tool that it takes, uh, when there are in emissions in a, in a, uh, let's say, in the, in a plume of air, and, uh, we have you, you, we used that during the, the sampling and we did not detect any contaminant emissions.
And also, could the people who are here from Excel identify who they are and what they're, um, you know, who they are and what their role is with the company tonight?
We, we, we can't make them identify themselves. We can identify ourselves, but we can't make them until, if they choose to come forward and speak in the microphone, they would have to identify themselves like anybody else.
I think that's it. Oh, I have a statement though. And then, this is, is it to be addressed, this is a public hearing, right? And this is addressed to Mr. Costa from Excel. He said that he would not want to impact the neighborhood and he wanted to be, um, considered to be a good neighbor, and I just wanted to remind him of that.
Thank you, Ellen. I just want to make mention, you did bring something up, but I just want to make mention of it. You talked about the, um, hours of im, um, implementation that the Town of Free Town has, um, given towards their license, and I just want to turn it over to the attorneys right now.
Yeah, just briefly on that, uh, we are aware that there, there are the hours of operation that was set by the board of selectmen as part of the license that was issued. We are aware of their complaints of, uh, lack of compliance with, with those hours. And, uh, as you know, we'll be meeting an executive session after this meeting, we'll be discussing how to pursue that, that issue further, but we are aware of that.
Hi, good evening, George Pucci Eso from Town Council's office. We, uh, on your question about the hours of operation, uh, there are hours on the selectman's license, but under the previous, um, administrative consent order from DEP, there were hours restrictions as well, and maybe we could get an answer to your question from DEP on that, with, with, uh, what's going on with those hour requirements, because it was similar to what the, uh, selectman had proposed.
Okay, with regard to the hours of operations, the way that the permit's structured, um, we have language that basically speaks that, albeit our assertion of when we believe the shredder, for example, could be operated, um, we, the party needs to obey, obey local, um, and federal ruling. So for us, um, basically, we honor and acknowledge that any local bylaw or license, and I have in front of me the May 30, 2017 license that the town granted. And basically, it speaks very clearly that the hours of operations, um, eight to four, Monday through Friday, with no weekends or no federally observed holidays. So irrespective as to whether the DEP's hours might be different, whether they're, um, a smaller time, shorter timeframe or expanded, elongated time, timeframe, the way that our permit is structured is that the party needs to comply with local and federal ruling as well.
Yes, uh, yeah, the consent order that, uh, you brought up, it had an expiration date and I believe it was July 8th, so, uh, that no longer applies and they are, uh, operating pursuant to the permit we had issued on November 29th, 2016. And that one only restricted operations for this shredder, uh, to operate between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. But, uh, as we indicated, uh, that does not supersede anything that, uh, the local authority would restrict.
Yeah, I just wanted to just answer what's, uh, the settlement that you were trying to enter into, did that include an hours restriction?
We're under discussions with that. Yes, uh, that is, uh, being considered and, uh...
What's the added language?
Yeah.
The local hours, um, being considered.
Thank you.
Am I good? Hello, O'Neil, I'm going to talk to Frank on, uh, 7:00 to 7:30.
Need to put the mic up, Mike.
7:00 to 7:30 in Sonnet. First of all, I'd like to ask the DEP, why aren't you people in these meetings more, more often? This is the second time I see you guys at these meetings. These meetings have been going on for nine months, why don't you do it more often?
That's a very fair question. If you, um, measure our interests based on, um, local presence, um, I just wanted to tell you that, um, every day we wake up and we go to work, and Excel is part of the document in front of us. Um, there is not a day that we do not deal with Excel. Whether you see DEP actively out there responding to complaints, um, participating in public meetings at your request or request of, um, the select board and the local officials or Representative Fiola, um, our appearance of only two meetings is not a reflection of the importance that the department places on this particular day. There's a lot of behind the scenes work that does happen, and I can assure you that prior to working for the Department of Environmental Protection, I used to work in a private company, um, not responsible for doing any unfortunate work. Once I started working with DEP, I can assure you, and Maria, my colleague, um, she's been, um, the director of enforcement at the Boston office, enforcement is very tedious and moves very slowly. Enforcement needs to be credible and factual and valid because you always run the chance of any kind of intervention, appeal, or other influences that derail the work we do. Um, I feel very confident that we are at a point where what we want, we will get by way of a consent order. As you remember, Mr. Branco, we spoke on numerous occasions, um, some of the work that we were attempting to do was really derailed by Mother Nature. We had the rains in the spring, we did not have ideal conditions to collect the sampling results, we communicated constantly on the challenges that we were experiencing in order to get the data that we needed. Um, thankfully, we have the information and I'm confident that we will bring the parties to the table, have an executed document that will be defensible in a court of law.
So I, I do understand that, uh, but as a resident of Sonnet, uh, you know, uh, we've had numerous meetings, I would just feel as a resident that, uh, two times is not enough for you people to give us enough rate on, on, on a matter like this. I mean, just of you, you know, this is what it is.
Yeah, to add to what you already said is, uh, while we're working on the deliberations trying to arrive to a solution, it's very little that we can disclose. Uh, we say we're simply, while we're here is because we're so confident that we have an agreement in principle and we can talk about it, but before then we couldn't. So it's, there's no purpose for us to be here and say, I'm sorry, we cannot talk. And, uh, if, uh, if you wouldn't mind having us just sit here and say nothing, I'd be more than happy to come.
No, I, I understand, just sometimes we ask a certain question to the town council and they can't answer and they wouldn't shoot people on the weekends.
Yeah, but I'm only as far as color waiting.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you this, we know since, since Excel has been operating, they're not being in compliance. Why can't the Town of Free Town and DEP shut them down? Why? How long is it going to be? Okay? How long is it going to take for my kids to wake up in the morning, like this morning, with the bad vibrating? Okay? How long is this going to take for you people that you, the Town of Free Town and DEP give them a license to operate?
Sure, more than happy to respond, um, if you'd like for me to speak first. We're going to thank, um, Mr. Branco, looking for answers from both the Town and the Department. So I can tell you from the DEP review that, um, the license was issued at the local level and that warranted, um, a permit from the Department of Environmental Protection. So shortly thereafter, the DEP, on November 29th, um, received, um, basically prior to that received the permit and on November 29th, 2016, to be exact, um, that's when the department issued a permit under the air regulations. I'll tell you that the permit is as good as the information that's incoming to us. The shredder, the facility had not been built, um, it was a concept, it was a permit, uh, to authorize the construction and operation of a new facility. Um, as we have sat down and have been at your kitchen tables, thank you for allowing us to go there and have more measured and, um, longer conversation on this particular topic, but just to disclose to everyone, um, the permit was reviewed with an eye on the assertions and representations that were made. And so we act on a permit based on what we have in front of us. On December 10th, that's when the complaints commence, um, to roll in into the department. Um, obviously, um, the way that it was thought about, the modeling, um, there were some pieces that obviously, um, pedal to metal upon operation and turning the switch, um, it, it's, it's a different world, so I do want to acknowledge that. Um, we have talked a little bit about, um, the interesting features of this particular geography that we're talking about. Um, there are other shredders across the Commonwealth, um, but these locations often are located in areas that may not have the proximity, um, to, um, the residential property, um, residential properties like we have here in this particular situation. So that's a very unique feature, um, that's why it's been so complicated and so challenging.
How many shredders do you know in the state of Massachusetts that are, that are this close to a resident?
We have zero.
You have zero? And you want to look me in the eye and tell me that you give these people a license to operate with no experience whatsoever?
I cannot speak to the experience or not experience, what I'm letting you, what I'm telling, Mr. Branco, what I'm letting you know is that the department received information and technical mathematical calculations that represented that the noise would not be excessive or create nuisance post fence line. That is the fact that I'm articulating tonight, that's, that's what I'm telling you tonight.
I understand that we're talking about a shredder and according to you, you just stated that there is no shredder in, in the state of Massachusetts as close to the residents as Excel. And you go ahead with, uh, doing further research on different states and give them a license and ruin my way of living, the people at Alexander Drive, people on the High Street, and it's been nine months and God knows for how long this is going to go on.
So, Mr. Branco, I'm not going backwards, I'm going forward. And all I'm trying to tell you tonight is that the representative modeling that was in front of us, vetted by our department, gave the indication that there, it would be feasible to operate this facility based on the representations, and that is all I can speak to. We are now in this situation, we're all here, obviously, acknowledging that there's been non-compliance, that there's been, um, a situation that warrants additional mitigation beyond what has been incorporated to date, and now that is the goalpost.
Still doesn't change that I cannot sit by the pool with my family, with my friends, and it still doesn't change that I cannot have a, a party, a, a cookout or anything because I can hear my kids talk to me.
And I don't want to take that right or that...
But you did, you did. You and the Town of Free Town did. It is what it is. Okay, thank, um, I... You keep talking about defined, how much is defined? Can you tell me what, what's the minimum?
I can, I can have a slow start at this moment, but there will be a limit.
Okay. Well, we're going back to Excel, they wanted to be good neighbors and nothing has, uh, nothing, uh, has changed from the day that they, that day opened. Uh, and, uh, talking about the hours, honestly, about the hours that day... And talking about the hours, honestly, about the hours that day they've been operating, it's a joke. They start when, they really start when they want. Eleven o'clock at night. I mean, the shredder closes at five, five fifteen or whatever. But the other conveyor belts, they run sometimes until eleven o'clock at night. You know, the police as witnesses taking statements of this. And as I said, you know, nothing changes. Everything is over, the same, over and over and over again. I just wish, honestly, we could have a time that they could be shut down or... You know, I, you know, waiting until eleven o'clock at night isn't acceptable. And as far as noncompliance, you know, everything is still the same. The noise level is through the roof today, it's through the roof. The smell, debris in my pool this morning. I had to clean my pool, this debris in my pool, basically every week there is. You know, and it kills me that Excel is telling us that they want to be a good neighbor and nothing changes, nothing changes. Thank you.
Charles Sullivan, forty-six High Street. I have a question first about the litigation of grid. Is there any evidence that that will solve the problem? Or is this just something more that they're trying to do? What evidence do we have that that's going to solve it?
We're currently discussing the approaches. Basically, we've been needing twice to get there. And again, with this particular situation, you're looking at a whole bunch of different sources of noise. You have the stationary sources, the nonstationary sources, for example. When you add all those things together, whether it's the shredder, the conveyor belt, the truck that comes in, the dropping of the metals, the managing, the pushing of the piles, all those things, A plus B plus C plus D equal a cumulative noise. So what we're trying to do is basically isolate, or basically we're reviewing the work that Excel has done to date, which is basically acknowledge all of the moving parts and all of the non-moving parts. And basically attempt to isolate each of the sources so that cumulatively, they will be below the ambient, the anticipated and established ambient background for that particular facility. That is why it's taking a lot of time to try to further examine how the operation works, how does it work, how does it do the work, and what is causing the noise.
And my next question was, the conveyors that work with the fluff, they are in themselves, I would say, from just observation, personal observation, above the sound level. Is there any plan to cause that to be, that noise to be increased?
Again, what we're saying is that what we'd like to see is a plan that isolates all of the sources, and there's a fix for every single source so that together, when you add up all the noises, it's below the actual background level that's established. If Maria wishes to expand upon that.
As Millie had mentioned before, the fix has to be looked in a holistic way. Some features will have to do with adding additional soundproofing materials around the shredder. They also will have to look at added enclosures for some of these issues that you're mentioning. And a key part is also the best management practices in the way they conduct, manage the materials, you know, the dropping of the materials, the pushing. All that will have to be looked at, and there has to be a way to do it that. There is a lot of room for improvement. We do agree that a lot of that needs to be looked at and addressed. Yes.
I do also want to add another thing, which is that the plan that we're developing right now and that we're embodying and memorializing by way of this order is a plan that's very specific to Excel. So if you have other adjacent abutting facilities, excuse me, that may be a source of noise, technically, at this moment, we don't have any control. And I think that's why we solely and really truthfully rely on the town to keep an eye on any other additional sources of sound that are being introduced. And again, it could be a commingling situation that distorts the overall understanding of the real Excel-related noise. So we are keeping a check on that. But for the moment, we're focusing on all of the various sources of noise as part of the Excel operation.
Then I have two more questions. There appears to be a dust problem also. And about a week ago, there was a major explosion in the area. And I myself investigated, made sure there was no blasting from any type of quarry operation or anything like that because it was so intense, it drove the ground. My understanding from a fire department official is when they went there, they denied it was an explosion, but they did, "Oh, it must be this dust. We'll have to bring out hoses and hose it down." Is there any plan to have anything more permanent than someone deciding that, oh, we're going to pile down because it's dusty out? Is there any plan with D E P that way?
Yeah, but for the best management practices on how we... If we are managing well... Yes, the best management practices are intended to improve the way the facility operates with the goal of minimizing emissions and the dust, the noise, the cold that would be incorporated. Yes. Covering the pile, so, you know, whatever it may be. So that we're expecting to develop that as part of this agreement.
Okay, so would that also be the case with the resident of the flood that is piled about thirty feet high in some places? So I guess my last question is, when is any of this going to be done? I mean, I think the removal of the flood is kind of like, that's something that they should have known back then that they were going to have to remove. And I know that they have made some inquiries, but they haven't done anything about it, piling it on site.
Right, that's a good point. And right now, as we've been describing, we, and I met one with my colleague Maria, pointed to is that there's been a necessity to look at this facility in a different, totally different way, rather than just, albeit, at the compliance point is defined as to what the sound, the noise concentration is at the fence line and, you know, and the residential points, that's really the affected party. What we feel as though is imperative is that we look at the facility with, through the lenses of what is really truly causing the noise, rather than just trying to do a lot of mathematical comparisons and compare contrasts and then, you know, going through the penalty route. I mean, we really want, we genuinely want a fix and looking at it by way of separating and isolating all of the potential areas of noise. Also focusing on things like management of piles. And there are some things that will definitely be done within days sooner, rather than potentially other pieces that are more complicated. So right now, what we have in front of us and the task that we're performing is basically trying to sequence, evaluate and sequence all of the various actions so we can have a staggered plan that gets at everything from dust emissions or fluff, debris management, controlling the piles if there is a height issue. So all those things, you know, trying to, you know, evaluate how fast the conveyor belt moves. For example, that may be a source of noise. So basically, we are tasked with doing some engineering evaluation. And at least, I will say that Excel is tasked with doing that and that we are tasked with ensuring that the approach is valid and sound and as aggressive from a timeline and litigation as we all wish and we hope, and that's our goal.
I guess the last thing, is there any timeline on it? Especially, the noise of the shredder is a big elephant in the room, though it's not the only issue. Is there any timeline on that?
Right, so I'd like to manage that. Basically, the timeline is going to give way for the expectation by which, when we will have the plan to deal with all the pieces. And then the timeline will also go further into predicated on contracting. And we are obviously on top of that. Contracting for the necessary, whether it's equipment or whether it's time, labor, resources. It will speak to, by when the planning has to come in, by when the department will turn around the approval, by when the particular piece of equipment, mitigation measure is going to be installed. And then after that subsequently, as we have discussed, there is an element of sampling to ensure that the fix is working. So we will be detailing all those pieces. And as you can imagine, there's a lot, but we are already... We're pretty much into, pretty further into the putting down the pen on the pad and getting all those pieces out.
I'd just like to state that. I know that everyone that lives in the neighborhood, it's a very frustrating, to say the least, situation where we see where this company has come in, basically with erroneous plans, presented them to you. Now that we're eight months down the line, and they've run, and they're making money on this, and to some extent, it's a grudge with us. We know this man is making money. That's part of his gain, I'll say. And that we're looking at probably another year. Not exaggerating, that be correct? Would it not be correct to say, "We're not going to have, we're not going to have..."
I hope it's clear.
Oh, yeah, I realize, I realize that you're hoping. But in this time period, this person is running a business where he gambled with. He made a gamble, but he doesn't seem to be the person that's having to pay for this gamble. It's the residents who have lived here. My family has lived on my property for eighty years. And we don't have any right. This man comes in and he's running a business, and he's making money. And well, what he, what he gets to him, he'll get to him. That's our view.
I respect that view, and I cannot, you know, speak for you. So I appreciate that you're telling me. What I'm telling you very respectfully, and I just want to be, let me be clear. The department has two choices in front of us. We can attempt to resolve the matter, hopefully, with emphasis on hopefully and without reserving all our rights to go in a different direction that often is deemed as draconian and no guarantee. We could at any time issue a unilateral order to do what we need to do. Let me just be clear. The administrative consent order with penalty does not have appeal rights, which means that party consents to do what the department is looking for. And we work for the constituency, we work for the regulated community, we work for a lot of people, but at the end, we work for the affected parties. So we believe very strongly that proceeding with an administrative consent order with penalty is the quickest way to get at a fix. Should we go in a different direction? The party has appeal rights, and it is very plausible, I cannot speak for Mr. Koster, again, I don't know him, that he could basically appeal. It's what anybody could do, or he may say, "No, let's settle." There's always room for settlement. And the department strives for settlement because we believe that it's the best approach to getting to a solution.
I appreciate that. I understand that, that, though we might not feel the way that in the end, that that's the way we have to go. It's just, it's very disconcerting that where the people are suffering. I mean, it gets to the point where it's, you know, it's tax it on the line to have... You know, some, I was going to say, some days, you, it's in the background. And then, like, four o'clock this afternoon, it was like banging a drum right in front of me. So that gets frustrating. I understand, I realize that settlement and not having an appeal process that could linger on for three, five years. Hopefully, that would be a median time. I understand that, but it is frustrating. That's part of what, that's part of the people I'm living with every day. Thank you.
Cindy Sander, sixteen Alexander Drive. I understand you're working on compliance and getting them...
Hold the mic down, please.
I understand that you're working on trying to get them in compliance, and I would like to eventually get a deadline. Once this agreement is signed, I was hoping that maybe you could send something out to the people who live on Alexander and High Street. In all fairness, it would be kind for us. We have been talking a lot about air pollution, and I don't understand how they could possibly have passed an air pollution test. I have samples that I've been collecting from my pool every single day. I've been in my house for fourteen years. I've never had a debris in my pool, as I do this year. I have it all labeled on the date and everything. There is, some mornings I wake up in the middle of June, in July, and it looks like it snowed in my pool from the fluff that is being blown from my property. I cut my grass, I have big pieces of black plastic all over my yard. How does that pass air quality tests if I know it's coming from that? So I don't know what kind of tests you've run, but obviously, it's not testing for the right issues. Maybe you're testing for gases. But it's particles of material that are floating through the air. You can see them. I don't understand possibly how it could have passed your tests. Another thing that has not even been brought up tonight, and I'm hoping is part of your order, is the ground vibration. I stand in my house, and my house shakes. I now have cracks in my ceiling that I've never had in the fourteen years that I've lived there. I don't know what these explosions are. It feels like a car has rammed into the front of my house. My daughter called me up several times because she's home before I am in a panic that she thought the roof was falling in because of their explosions. My child, at fifteen years old, should not have to live with these type of scares and her being home alone. And nothing is being mentioned about that, is any of that being covered in part of your order?
Unfortunately, the vibrations are not a part of the air pollution regulations. So that would be something that I hope it gets addressed through the best management practices that are in place for the facility's operations. But without knowing what the source of those vibrations are, I couldn't give you a fix. You know, if they are, and the explosions, I don't know. We have not witnessed one. By the time we go to the facility, there is nothing going on. So I haven't seen that, but I do hope that if it is something that Excel is not aware of, that they have to comply with, I hope that it gets incorporated into this holistic approach of looking at how they manage the facility.
Are you in charge of the best management practices? Who's coming up with the document for best management practices?
So the answer is yes. In terms of the vibrations, the vibrations that have been reported to the department, our, as Maria stated, we do not have regulations that speak directly to vibrations. The vibrations, if they are real, and I think I've talked to some of the residents at Maria's house as well, and they have pointed to cracks, et cetera. The only way that could potentially positively deal with any future vibrations is by way of controlling the operations in a way that does not result in vibrations, which are an expression... an expression, could be an expression of what's going on here. I'm not aware of any other sources of operations that could lead to that, but I think it's, regardless, our job is to ensure that between noise mitigation onsite, there is a positive outcome for any subsequent results associated with the original injury source of noise. The other piece on the explosions, Maria is correct, we have received some emails and calls when the explosion is reported, but I'd like to see if I could get some assistance from the town because I think they have been really great about responding and most recently, you know, we basically had the board health agent and then there was a lull because the agent left and by the time that the town retained another one, basically they were in a very proactive retaining a new agent process. The fire department, I believe, was responding, or the police department was responding to the call, so maybe you can get some insight on that. By the time that the department gets the call, goes out there, we have not witnessed ourselves the explosions, but we're trying to understand, and it's been part of the conversation, is whether the explosions are associated with perhaps like dropping of metal from.
Absolutely not.
Okay, so thank you for the information and, but I cannot tell you here, you know, in all honesty, that I have witnessed explosions.
Does the town have documents from when the police came for the explosions that they can provide to DEP?
We have a copy of all the records from the residents when they call to the police station as well, as we're keeping a log inside of the board of selectmen's office of who calls and what time they call and what the infraction may be. So we do have a documentation of all of that. And I'll make it very specific to DEP, anything that you need, this board is willing to do to make sure that things get done. Sure, well, we do get the reports. The town facilitates those reports sometimes on a daily basis. I think the issue here is the investigatory part, I mean, exactly, so trying to resolve that issue because I just heard you and a lot of people react to my theory about what the explosions, what's causing them, and the answer is no, so which warrants further development, understanding of what exactly is going on. So that is one area where the board has been great about reacting and going and responding to the complaints, getting our heads together and understanding that particular very specific type of noise would be really helpful.
Also, knowing the source, the source is very significant, isn't, you're assuming it's Excel, we don't know?
Well, in the 14 years I've lived there, I've never had an explosion, other than when there was an accident on the main road. And that was usually when the transformer blew out or something that, it was nature.
Oh, but yesterday?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, and they're going to tell you it's a container, because that's what they know you want to hear, so that they're not on the hook. At this point, they will tell you whatever they want, so that they don't get investigated because they know, as well as anybody else, that something is blowing up randomly, but they don't want to tell you what it is.
Well, we're in discussion right now, aren't we? And this is sort of a right side of the whole negotiation, so thank you.
Well, good luck with your negotiations and I hope it turns out well for everyone in town, not just Excel, because you're here to represent us as residents of this town and protect our town, protect our water, protect our air, protect our children. And Excel, in my opinion, is not out to do that, they're out to make a buck. And I believe in free business, everyone has the right to start a business and make money and go for it, but don't hurt people in the process. Thank you for your time.
I just want to clarify for DEP that the board's left and through also the police department and our office has never received a complaint from any other operation in the area.
Well, what about debris on the main road? My daughter got a flat tire about a month ago and I leave, we call it town in Freetown for the sweeper to come and clean the street. I mean, it's there, it's there, it's right on the main road, coming from Excel to the main road, there's debris there all the time. And a lot of times, the trucks leave without the cover on the trailer. I mean, you know, Excel has stated that it's a second-party drive-in, we've seen Excel trucks without a cover on the trailer, you know what I mean? It's like excuses after excuse, but the tracks are there. Thank you.
Mr. Brinko, I think that through the board, we could probably step up enforcement through the police department and give citations for littering, so we may be going down that road. And we'll let the police department know of your concerns as well.
Because I believe the sweeper's been there more than once to sweep the street and that debris, I've been there for 14 years myself, and that debris has never been there. So nobody else is doing except Excel. And like I said, I don't understand why these trails are leaving Excel without them being covered. You know, Steve picked up a couple of months ago, debris right off the exit, I'm talking about a pound and two pounds of steel. How does that happen? How do we allow that to happen? And then Excel, they say that it's not them, it's a company that they hire or whatever. I mean, the debris is there, it's off the main road, it's off the highway and it's there, it's been there for months and the same thing over and over again. Again, it's just about Excel, forget about the residents, forget the PC quiet, forget about being a good neighbor.
So I appreciate, you know, what the board has stated, because again, I just want to emphasize that why DEP is involved in this matter is because the department came to us for the permitting of the shredder. So I think I'm going to let join municipal safe approach to ensuring that there's comprehensive compliance of matters that may not necessarily be governed by the department, it's really important and we continue to work together. I know the town has actually in the past fined, levered, you know, issued a fine with regards to littering, so that complaint and concern that you have has been at the forefront of the town and DEP for that matter.
Well, I appreciate it. I want to thank DEP and thank the town, but again, you know, it's frustrating as a resident that, you know, my kids would get up in the morning, they wake up in the morning with a bad shaking and that happens on a daily basis. And as far as the explosion goes, it doesn't happen all day long, it basically happens once a day or every other day, you know, it's very tough to make a record of that unless the police is over our house and you report it something. Thank you.
To DEP, I would ask that the trucks, uncovered trucks and ensuring that trucks be covered be part of the best practices. Thank you. And also, I just want to clarify that the board of selectmen did not issue a permit for the shredder, the board of selectmen only issue a permit according to the junk handler's license that is requested by the bylaws of the town.
Ellen Lima on 41 High Street, one question. It's come to my attention that Excel is pursuing a case against the town in Freetown for the loss of wages due to the limits on the hours of operation, is that true?
Thank you, yes, it is, it's public record that Excel has filed suit against the town, that's part of why we're meeting an executive session after this meeting, we can always speak to limited issues, but Excel is challenging the permit and the limited hours that were imposed by the town, that's why right now, there's that issue about compliance with the hours.
That's being a good neighbor.
Steve Dribb, 41 Alexander Drive. I did some research on a thing and they said they put like a windsock out and it collects the debris, the dust particles and everything that come through the air and then they can take it back to a lab and they can test it. Why can't they put something like that on top of his containers? Because not all, not all this stuff is coming from that truck. Like I say, he's got that pile of what he's calling fluff, which is house demolition material, because if you go over there, it's all filled with wood, so it's all demolition material. It's not, it's not the fluff, like he said it was going to be dashboards and he said it was going to be seat cushions from cars, it's not that, it's full of wood and the road is covered with the screws and nails and everything from them hauling in house demolition. And he doesn't have a permit to do demolition material, so how does that happen?
The department has conducted visits in the facility and we have not witnessed any demolition material.
So what's in the demolition, what's in the, what's in the fluff? How come it's all filled with wood?
That's not what we have observed, yeah.
I climbed over the wall and went there and got caught at doing it, but it's full of wood. And I mean, they don't make cars out of wood, they don't make metal out of wood. So it's all demolition material that he's hauling in it, that's where all the screws and everything are on, on Ridge Hill Road are all filled with, all the screws and nails are all coming out of demolition trailers.
Well, we will go back to, you know, if this is a complaint that has been presented to the department, we will certainly go back and look at our log. I mean, I guess I asked the question, and I'm not into the metals recycling business, but why in the world would you have wood at a facility, you know, that potentially, I mean, there's, that to be, you know, it makes no sense, but we will certainly go back and ensure that we address your question.
If you look at that pile of fluff that he has, which is keep growing, I mean, that's where a lot of the dust and all of the stuff is coming that's blowing up over those containers. I mean, if I stand in my front yard for a half an hour or so, my eyes are burning, I mean, they're burning. So you turn it on, say you have, you did a test that saying there's no, there's no pollution in the thing, what's making my eyes burn from that stuff? There's got to be something there, either it's coming out of that fluff pile or it's coming out of whatever he's got on the ground.
Yeah, we would ensure that the file gets better managed with two weddings uncovering maybe, yeah.
Can't you put something on top of his containers to take air quality samples? That covers the whole area there, instead of just going for that one pipe coming up? Because now you can sense the smoke, if you see it in that, in that picture, it's not coming out of that pipe.
I take your suggestion into consideration.
Joe Chivasso, 15 Alexander Drive. I just wanted to speak a little bit about, you mentioned the mitigation and how that this area, this site is rather unique. I've been there since 2004 and I can say, you mentioned, I guess, we've never seen this before, for years, like I said, since 2004, most days in the summer, we could keep our, I could keep my back door open, didn't have to run AC at all, the breeze would come through. It's a generally a very breezy area, I can't speak to all my neighbors, but for years, that would be the case, leave your windows open throughout the summer, save a little money. Unfortunately, that this year has not been, it's impossible, we've had to keep the back door, the back slider, the back windows basically shut in all summer long because of the noise, because of the fumes, you know, we haven't talked, I don't think we've talked enough about the fumes. The noise is one thing, but to go outside in your backyard and just like, what is that smell almost on a daily basis, it's been ridiculous. And I don't know if enough has been said, when you come to this mitigation plan, how you'll be able to measure that, you know, are you going to go down the street, I say downstream, but you know, some of our properties, both on High Street and on Alexander Drive, to really realize it's coming from there, you know, we've never had that smell, that rust smell, the fumes in the air that is just, it's there now, it's never been there before. I don't know if you can speak to that a lot.
We have received those complaints and we have investigated and the nature of those situations is very clean and it's very difficult to capture it in real time, so we have missed a lot of that. I do tell you that on the facility, I've been there myself, I do smell some of the files, but when I step out and I go beyond the fence line, I honestly couldn't smell it.
You could definitely smell it on the street.
Catching the right wind direction and it takes a lot of trial and error approach, so, but we have attempted to.
Like I said, it's a very windy, breezy area, I'm one of the few houses on the street that actually has a fence in the backyard and I can see a lot of that stuff, the debris accumulating against the back. If it wasn't for that, it would be in the property, it would be in my pool, you know, and I can speak to what my neighbor said about the dust, I see that this year, I only got a pool last year, and I can see this brown dust lining up on things, you know, the inflatables from the pool, this brown dust that I know is coming from there because they're the only new operation in the area, so how you'll be able to test against that is what I'd love to know because it's not going to go away. And I'm not an expert, but unless that place is completely enclosed with the wind, the breeze, it's just going to continue. You know, you can build a wall 80 feet high, it's going to get around and I know they didn't do anything on the other side of the property either, so if you want to speak to that, please.
What I can speak to is, our current energy right now is to try to devise a plan for best management practices so that, again, thinking about no exposure equals no risk, no source equals no impacts beyond the fence line. That's really where I think our energy should be poured into because, as Maria explained and she is right, we have a whole bunch of different, for example, different kinds of cases that deal with odors in different municipalities. And by the time that we get there, the odor has pretty much dissipated. So it's very hard to validate and basically have factual and defensible data, but rather, we would much rather, I think, in the interest of time and just to alleviate the injury or results of complaints that we're receiving and we're listening to you tonight, we would much rather address those issues right at the source, so that if captured onsite, they don't go offsite.
You may have answered it and I don't know if you did, my neighbor on High Street asked one of the first questions, if there have been non-compliance, why has there been no restrictions, why, from DEP standpoint, they submitted that non-compliance back nearly six months ago and we've seen nothing since then. I know you mentioned weather and different things of that sort, but they issued that complaint to them, that non-compliance and nothing's come in.
Right, exactly. So our chronology basically lays out, and this is the document that's been requested and, you know, first we will provide the town officials, chief municipal officer, the board of health with a copy and following that, we will be providing you with a copy. Pretty much lays out the chronology of our quote history with regards to this case that came to our attention, starting on December 10, I believe, 2017, that's the date that I believe is on 2016.
December 20, 2016.
That's the date when we first started receiving the complaints. As with many cases, we always, it is the practice that we offer the party that is in alleged non-compliance, the opportunity to basically show and demonstrate that they are achieving or working towards compliance. I have to say, they have done some litigation, the question is whether it's enough, but it has not been the situation, and just to clarify, and again, you know, I know it seems like a lifetime, you're living right adjacent to this property, you wake up to noises and, you know, I'm hearing you loud and clear what you're telling me. What I'm trying to say is that by the time that we reach out, we ask for the mitigation, they come to the fold, as you, you know, how it works, you know, getting a contract and I'm not making excuses for Excel, we want this done yesterday. And I think that's why we are at the point right now that after various attempts to get at the noise nuisance condition, we're ready pretty much to say, we have to look at this situation totally different, which starts by isolating every single potential source of noise and developing a fix that's very precise and very specific, not just the fence that hopefully captures, mitigates for all of the noises. We've tried all those things, it's been trial and error, now we're at the point that I believe the only way to solve the matter really truly involves developing a very specific mitigation for each of the mobiles. really truly involves developing a very specific mitigation for each of the mobile and non-mobile sources. I don't have any addition, any other faith that we can get to a solution unless we really look at everything because at the end, it's cumulative noise that you are receiving. So we need to control each and every, and, and every, every operation behaves differently and emits a different kind of noise. So that's where we're focusing right now, developing a strategy by separating and implementing that strategy. And DEP will be approving. If, if it sounds like it's going to work, DEP is pretty much now in negotiations to arrive at a solution that looks at every separation, isolation, mitigation so that we can get beyond fixes that we're implementing in the past like the fence and the containers and other things that do not appear to be doing the job, that they shouldn't be doing the job.
Just quickly on the hours of operation, you mentioned DEP stipulated that that would be decided on at the local level. I read the complaint that Excel submitted towards the town and it mentions that they claim it's unlawful to set those restrictions. Can the legal counsel make any comment at this point about whether they consider that unlawful considering what DEP just said, they do have the right at its, at the local level?
Again, we are going to, meeting on this issue in executive session. I can't discuss litigation strategy in a public meeting, especially the representatives to the side who's sitting in the room. But I can tell you, we will be defending against this, uh, this complaint vigorously.
My last thing goes towards what one of my neighbors mentioned about the settlement with the residents early last year, late last year. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Mr. Killarren represented that group. Would, if so, would you be willing to make any kind of comment in regards to what was the settlement as far as the hours of operation, the stipulations that a lot of people don't, aren't aware of? And I don't mind making a statement.
There was an appeal, excuse me, for the record, Attorney Thomas Killarren, offices at 350 North Main Street, Florida, Massachusetts. I represented a number of petitioners, two of which are here today, Bill and Kate Maddos, who live on High Street. As part of the initial air quality approval that was issued by DEP, a group of neighbors did take an appeal. As part of that appealed process, an eventual agreement was reached with Excel. There were some modifications that were made to the approval that was ultimately issued in November of 2016. With the, without the hours of operation that were set forth in that plan approval, I believe it was already stated by the representatives from DEP, the hours of operation were Monday through Friday from seven AM to nine PM, Saturday, seven AM to three PM, and no operations on Sundays or holidays. But I believe that limit of hours of operation only applied to the shredder. It didn't apply to any other activities on, on the site. That's going to lead me actually to, to one of my questions, if I may. I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about hours of operation this evening. Obviously, this litigation, part of that litigation with the town involves some of the restrictions on hours of operation that they imposed. DEP, as part of an order issued, and I'm not quite sure when it was, it may have been either February or maybe April, did put a, a limitation on hours of operation. They restricted those hours that originally set forth in the original permit. And I believe that was Monday through Friday, nine to five, but no more than seven hours per day. I believe DEP stated that that order expired on July 8th of 2017, which leads you to the question of if DEP knows that Excel continues to be in non-compliance, based on representations that have been made, Excel has acknowledged their non-compliance, why has not a new order been issued since the expiration of July 8th order?
That's the, we have been in discussions with Excel since we discovered the violations. And they have come to the table, they are looking at additional mitigations. And at this point, as Millie indicated, we have reached an agreement in principle to enter into an administrative consent order with penalty. So that's where we are right now.
And I understand that, but the agreement that's been reached in principle obviously hasn't been put into effect yet. And if DEP thought it was proper to issue restrictions on hours of operation back in, whether it was, again, I'm not sure if it was February or April, and that expired in July, while these negotiations continue, why not extend that?
Well, all I can tell you is that, again, if the permit is read correctly, the way that I read the permit, nothing in the world stops parties from having to comply because we incorporated into the permit with local laws. So should any stipulation expire as it did on July 8th, 2017, our fallback position would be that party needs to comply with the local laws. And let me just reiterate again for the benefit of everybody. The town issued a very robust stipulation in the license that was granted on May 30, 2017, which speaks to hours of operations from eight to four, Monday through Friday, with no weekends. And it's very precise as to what pieces of the operations are covered under that timeframe. In addition, also, it provides for the party to do some maintenance from four to five PM. So as, just to answer your question very pointedly and directly, absent of any expired stipulation as it expired on July 8th, our fallback decision, which is presented in the permit, is that there is a local timeframe by which party must be responsive to an evaluation.
So.
Beyond that, Excel, during our discussions, they have agreed to continue to restrict the hours from eight to five in the spirit of reaching an agreement. So that will be part of the ACOP.
So, so the, if I understand you correctly, the, the ACOP is going to contain an hours of operation restriction between eight to five? And is that for all operations in totality or just the shredder?
At this, our permit covers the, the, it was issued for the shredder. So that's, they are restricting the operation of the shredder. But in the agreement, in, in the ACOP also, there is the stipulation that they must also comply with other requirements, local state, federal requirements. So it, it gets.
I, I understand that, that the permit was issued because of the shredder. But part and parcel to the shredder are the operations that go on at site. And I believe, I'm not sure which one of you stated this evening, but there are two forms of noise, stationary noise, non-stationary noise. Non-stationary noise being trucks in and out, materials being moved around on site. And those are things that the, the EP is taking into consideration when measuring the noise.
Absolutely. So let me be clear, the compliance point, fence line and residential property. So I think there's a, um, there's language that speaks to a residence that's occupied, the nearest occupied residence. So at the end of the day, whether it's the shredder only or the moving of piles, the compliance point is the fence line and beyond for the residential properties that are occupied. What we aim to do is to ensure that collectively stationary and non-stationary sources are mitigated so that we can ensure that there is no, no non-compliance at the fence line and more importantly, at the residential properties.
Since the town has put their hours of operation restrictions in place, has DEP received any complaints about operations going on after those hours or before they commenced?
Through the town, yes.
And has, has DEP found those complaints to be credible?
We are pretty much assuming that they are, given that it's a statement by the local police and the safety enforcement officers. So we will not be entering into any kind of debate.
In, in terms of the particular matter, I believe it was represented that as part of that test, it was DEP did find that Excel was compliant with the permit?
It was a compare and contrasting of concentrations, basically, if you can, if I can just attempt to describe this. So say for example, that have a coffee maker and there's a filter and the coffee will permeate through the filter and you have stink or liquid and, and it looks, the color that looks because you've got the coffee running through. So it's measuring the concentration of various particulates associated with the filter. In addition to that, so that's one measure. The other measure has to do with actually collecting and sampling for various constituents of concern in the air that's emitted through the stack. So that, basically, we are noting that that test occurred, that, that the filters and other things, the collection of this, an air sample was sent to a contract laboratory that's certified with the necessary quality assurance and controls methodology. The results came back, they were compared and contrasted with the federal government's numbers and the state's adopted numbers. And we're just here to tell you as a matter of just factually that when you do the compare and contrast, there was no situation where the concentrations exceeded the numbers that are currently, that have been promulgated and that basically are the standards for that particular constituent concern.
And with, with the feedstock that was utilized for the sampling, would that dictate or, or have some impact on what the results were at those tests?
I do not know.
We, during the protocol, we did ensure that they process material that's representative of the operation. So I would say it should have, yes.
And how does, how was the determination made by DEP that the materials that are being processed are representative of their day-to-day operations?
That was stated in, in, in the protocol and we did observe the, the testing. We had the staff actually present.
Does, does DEP show up on the site at random times to inspect the feedstock?
We have, yes, we have, we have.
Do you know how many times approximately?
I don't have it in front of me. We've, we've been there many times.
And in DEP does, excuse me, do any of these inspections take place unannounced?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Yes, I, just in, in closing, it just, the one thing that, that I think a lot of the people have expressed here this evening, and I know my clients have expressed to the town, to Board of Health, to the selectmen, and also the DEP, is the particular matter that they find on their property. Right away in December, when the facility was up and running, they were finding thin, large, I think it was black plastic like strips on their property. It was witnessed by the Board of Health, I think other members of the town, and perhaps even one of the representatives, representatives of DEP. The material, it seems, has changed a bit, but undoubtedly they continue to get it. I know it's been something that's been expressed by a number of the neighbors tonight, especially those that have swimming pools, that they go out there and they find this fine film on the top of their pool. And it's not a film that was there last year or the year before. And many of these people have lived at these properties for decades. And in some case, fifty, eighty years, I think one gentleman represented. And I guess they were all having a difficult time accepting the fact that this particular matter test was acceptable or passed protocols or complied with the air quality permit. When they can see with their own eyes, materials that are now on their property that weren't there before. And that's something that we'd certainly like DEP to continue to look into.
We will. And what they, the testing that Millie mentioned, has to do with what's getting needed by the staff. And what you're talking about is a wind blown material that could be debris from the piles or.
But I think if, if that's the case, then I think that, that common protocols need to be put in place to prevent that from occurring.
And that's what I'm talking about, the best management practices that we need to implement to pre, to prevent such instances. Yes, we're aware of the complaints.
And, and they understand that, and I think, I think they appreciate that and they appreciate that there's a process. But this has been going on now for them. This is something they've been living with now for nine months. And again, they feel like they're not really seeing any progress. I understand there's, there's a protocol that DEP has to go through. But obviously, the sooner that these best management practices can get put into place, the sooner this ACOP can get signed, I, I'd suggest the better.
Yes, but the facility has implemented measures to adjust that and the situation is improving. It's probably not perfect. And more needs to be done than that. They have been trying to adjust it, yes.
Yeah, I just, thank you, I agree. So I think what we will, we're taking good notes tonight. And I think it basically further validates for the department that there are a number of quick fixes that do not need to be sort of lingering during the process. There are things that could be happening as we speak and we will be pursuing those things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else?
My name is Bob Perry, I live at 76 High Street. You keep talking about ten percent, the noise outside the fence line. Well, I live a mile away up the street and I can hear it like it's in my backyard some days. Some days you don't hear it as much, but other days it sounds like it's standing right on the side of me a mile away. So you're saying for these residents that live right next door, it must be brutal at their house where I'm a mile away and I can hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to ensure I get everybody in, so if there's anybody new that wants to speak, put these two so now.
Can you tell us when you're going to have another meeting with DEP in the town like this one?
There's one more person that wants to speak.
Hi, we're at 87 Front Street. I just want to say that I think on behalf of a bunch of us here, we're looking forward to the day that Excel's a law in town. And that is our goal. I don't know how a recycling facility can operate in town and not be permitted as a recycling facility. Do they have a recycle permit?
We have made available local permits that we have issued to.
Right, you told me that they did have a recycling permit. They are recycling.
They, yes.
And they, and they are dealing with what?
Metal.
What kind of metal?
Scrap metal.
Which is?
Materials that need to.
Materials that have another reuse in the commonwealth.
So, so they're recyclable material, right?
Yeah, but.
But it's a regulated recyclable material, correct?
Right, because they're operating a machine.
Which is regulated under the hazardous waste regulations, right? So why do they not have a reg, why do they not have required recycling permit? Because if they.
It's not required to recycle metals in Massachusetts.
It's, but this, but this is the Code of Massachusetts regulations. It says, in the Code of Massachusetts regulations, that they are handling regulated recyclable material, that the scrap metal that they are producing.
Yes.
What?
I think they were granted an exclusion to process the.
Is that the CED and the BUD?
Yes, I, I sent you all the, the permits.
So, so that's the exclusions. So they, they are not required then to get a recycling permit?
No, they are not.
And so with the CED and the BUD, then that means that you are checking for hazardous waste, correct? And then the shredder has to do.
Yes, they have to characterize the waste.
But they're still transporting regulated recyclable materials. So how is it that they are not required to have the permit for recyclable materials?
Well, we'd be more, we would be more than happy to sit down. We have given you all the information that you have requested. But I would be more than happy to sit down with Maria and you to basically walk you through all the regulations. What I can tell you, it's a scrap metal facility.
Right.
What came to us for approval was the actual operation of the shredder that takes care of shredding the material. And so it's very much intimately tied with an air quality endpoint.
So what, so I mean, you can, you can stand in any one of their driveways on Alexander Drive and even at the top of High Street for a half an hour and you get a headache from the smell in the air. So you can't tell us that they're in compliance with, with the air quality. And, and you say that some outside company is doing the testing, but we're saying that we really don't care. I mean, the bottom line is we're going to come to the, the bottom of this. We're, we're going to try our best to, to resolve this because you guys aren't. You aren't, the town isn't right now, it hasn't, and it's, it's frustrating for everybody. So, I mean, do they have, do they have a stormwater permit? Because there's piles of shredder residue that sits on the, on site. that sits on that, on-site, uncovered. It gets rained on, and the water, not all that water goes into those basins, you know, it goes off onto the ground. There's no fence, there's no trespassing signs. I mean, it's utterly ridiculous. Do they have a stormwater permit?
They don't need it, they are, because they need to register with the underground injection control program, and that's...
And we're not buying, we're not buying any of this, just so you know. I mean, this really, you're endangering public health.
At this point, I think DEP has answered all the questions you raised, so I think to have, you know, that this kind of accusation towards them is not, is not helpful. So I think, you know...
Well, we're frustrated, so...
And we're hearing that, we're hearing that.
Thank you. All right, at this time, is there anybody, last one, and then I'm gonna turn it over.
I'm Cludier, 17 High Street. As I understand from your comments this evening from DEP, why wasn't this facility, why wouldn't sound mitigation be considered at the time of this permit was requested?
Sure, mitigations were required, but what I can tell you, based on our observations and validation of a situation with non-compliance, a clearly signal to us by the numerous complaints from the residents is that the fix that was proposed on paper, once implemented, did not work. So the job is not done, and that's why we're here having this conversation.
Now, being this is a facility of its first kind, close to the residential area like this, you would think there would be some kind of higher mitigating standard imposed in this type of matter.
The regulation does not provide for that particular feature of co-locating a shredder in adjacent to the residential property. So basically, what we had in front of us was information that represented that the way that the shredder was gonna be operating and the sound that was going to be emitted would not create a nuisance condition.
Actually, the shredder was enclosed to prevent, to control some of the noise, and the barriers were put in place as part of the permit, too.
Right, but that hasn't really done much.
Exactly, and that's what Millie's saying, it didn't, it's not as effective as we hoped it would be, so we're back at looking at further mitigation, and that's where we are.
Okay, we talked about this...
I just want to clarify, and a different approach to looking at how we mitigate the source, which basically involves more detailed separation, isolation, and understanding of each and every single piece of equipment that is being operated, so we can basically ensure that the fix that's being proposed to DEP is acceptable and will have an effect, a positive effect, in terms of the level of noise that's emitted. So that's a different way of engineering and thinking in terms of how to move forward.
Okay, in consideration of this mitigation, obviously, the health and well-being of the citizens of this area is obviously of the most concern, and obviously, right now, it's not doing anything for the health and well-being of the citizens right now. And speaking of the fluff that's piled up out there, I witnessed it myself, that's, that is an immense pile of fluff that's obviously getting into the air, and I was the resident that Mr. Millie talked about earlier, working in my yard, that my wife and I could not even take the smell, just doing regular yard work. We had to go inside the house, shut all the windows, and I live at 17 High Street, which is approximately less than a quarter mile away from the facility. So it's just becoming, you know, unacceptable, period. And I think the only way mitigation of this facility is, the only way to mitigate this whole thing is to completely enclose it. If this facility is gonna stay in this town, something of this measure of magnitude should be considered for this mitigation. Completely close this facility to avoid all these concerns that the public has. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna ask if anybody from Excel would like to come up and speak.
Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to, for the one person I was able to, who's here. I am here, my name is John Markey, I'm an attorney from Bedford, Massachusetts, and I'm trying to hear what the concerns of the neighbors are, the answers that the DEP has, and what the committee had to say. Obviously, we're in the process of trying to determine what the additional mitigation materials are, and we'll continue to work on that, but I don't really have any substantive things to answer, but we're here to listen, that's why I'm here.
I just wanted to make sure that I offered everybody the opportunity. Thank you very much. At this time, I just want to make mention that Mr. Charles Sullivan has recused himself from the meeting as a member of the board of selectmen. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Excel Recycling LLC versus Lisa Pacheco, Robert Joes, and Charles Sullivan individually and as members of the Free Town Select Board, CA Number 1773, CB 00612, and not to come back into open session. And I will second that. All in favor?
Right.
Mr. Joes?
Yes.
Mrs. Pacheco?
Yes.